And the.
For the most part, yes.
Baseball season starts tomorrow.
One thirty is the briefing stop, three o'clock again.
Yeah, Karen has a countdown on her phone.
This is what I'm gonna say, I think that, I think right now the Dodgers and the Mets are the two best teams in the whole league. I don't have the confidence. And we'll see what happens with the same thing.
Unless they.
Change, unless you make some change in it. I don't know, but we'll see what happens. I don't have the confidence that I did last year.
Rookie, so basically if they do a guess, right? I mean, yeah.
Okay, it's March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, while the planning board meeting is ordered seventeen. Well, subdivision for Kansas. A lot of last month, so. Yes, please. All right, real call. Barbara Conroy.
Here.
Tony Springer. Francis Martinville.
Here.
Josh Fisher.
Here.
Michael Page.
Here.
Robert Tora.
Here.
Daniel Phillips. And John Allison. And Chairman John Krensky.
He gave me one back.
So now we just have to review the final plat since we went through the. Secret Rassle Month. And a public hearing.
If anyone needs them, I have full-size copies, but I need them back. You've got ledger ones there.
This is one where we had to have a public hearing because of the road to the.
Okay.
Any questions about the final plat? During for the a public hearing, there's, you don't have to have one. It's just just if the planning board deems it necessary.
Have we got any correspondence about this subdivision from anybody?
No, Chris, Kristen Derr is here representing the owner.
But from the neighbors or anything?
Nothing, we got nothing, we had all, um. We did that last month and.
Yeah, nobody was here for a public hearing either.
I don't think we need a public hearing. Nobody's questioned there or showed up for anything.
Had nothing, so.
This is something that's not mandatory, it's just that it's an option that the board has to decide whether to leave home or not.
No, it seems unnecessary. Um, Kristen, is your stamp on the the final that Karen's got?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's written final plat on here, she's got everything on here that she knows.
Okay.
Does anybody think we need a public hearing?
Any thoughts on public hearing?
Doesn't seem necessary, do we need to?
We don't have to.
If you feel that these plans are in subsequent agreement with the preliminary plat that you've already approved, you can waive the public hearing.
That's, we need to make the motion to do so.
Correct.
Hold on, does.
To waive the public hearing?
Is it just then?
You're not leaving it, it's not necessary, so unless you make a motion to hold a public hearing, there's no motion.
Good. So it's just, I'm, I make the motion to approve the final plat.
Do you want to do, yes.
I make the motion to approve the final plat.
I'll second it.
All right, so about Tony Springer, all right, motion to approve, uh, where are we at? Well, I don't have it on me.
Oh.
I was looking for two zero, there's a number on it, all right, two zero two five S D one, um, roll call vote. Barbara Conroy.
Yes.
Tony Springer.
Yes.
Francis Martinville.
Yes.
Josh Fisher.
Yes.
Michael Page.
Yes.
Rose Albertura.
Yes.
And Chairman John Krensky.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carry. Okay. Just gonna take a minute so I can sign your paperwork.
You know, you're lucky.
It doesn't sound different.
Yeah. I wish you were giving a phone over, the easier the talking.
The only thing we asked them to change was that.
You probably have straight paths.
That's what they really touched on. Okay, the conservation subdivision two zero two five S D dash two, is on, I'll see, is on state, I'll see, if you want to come up.
Good evening.
Hi. So is that the planning board sees we also have resolutions. To approve, deny, or. Depending on the planning board, we could table it till next month if you think we should. At this point, uh. Do you have any questions? Over the resolutions?
I just, I just wanted to fill everyone in briefly, um. They, they are going to be coming, Lazzar Woods subdivision is going to be coming to the town board at the town board meeting to. Ask for letters of intention to take over the roads, the water system and the. Stormwater system, but you can still either approve or deny tonight without that having been done, that's a town board approval, it's nothing to do. With your approval of this preliminary plat. And, um, I did last meeting, I gave you this D O H form that they were looking to get some information from, I received. That information today from the waters, the, he's not the water superintendent, he works in that department that handles all of that, we've gotten those numbers. And we passed a resolution at the town, the last town board meeting for Jean Rolino to sign this form, so that will be complete for them. And, um, the seeker review is done, it's been, um, put in the bulletin. And all that is left to do is for me to send out a final notice to the parties involved that we declared, that you declared a negative declaration. And everything's been, um, satisfied as far as the requirements there, and that has no bearing on your decision tonight either, if you decide to vote.
And just want to add, you know, it's our preference to have the town take care of the roads and stuff, uh, everything will be built to town specifications and upon completion, everything will be reviewed. Um, if not, then if that falls through, we'll still proceed and just, we'll deal with it internally.
And I think the only thing we asked them to change was the pedestrian path, and I see that's changed on the plans.
Yeah. Pedestrian path and we made it.
Yep.
Uh, that is why.
And the town engineer had asked for some of those notes, they weren't complete, and, uh. They were cut off on the original set, and they may fix that too, so that's.
Correct.
Correctives.
Yes.
Yep. I'm not even a question.
Sure.
Um, once we decide and make a motion, and we need to read into the record. I think we probably know it. I don't know, you tell me.
So. You can say, um, you can make the motion upon the resolution as written, but because this has been so controversial. My preference would be that you read the entire resolution, whichever one you pick.
So. Um, should we make a motion about the resolution first and then read it into the record before we vote, uh?
Yeah, whoever makes the motion, I would just say I make a motion and then just read the whole thing. I mean, it's a little second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I know that's really irritating, but I. Back here and do this again.
I agree, yes. Just, just checking. Well, I've went through this a couple of times, um. Actually, I'm looking at their pool. Uh, does anybody have any questions where. As far as the wording, what we, uh, talked about our last meeting, what we actually want them to do by the final plat, because then again, we'll have to, we'll have to come back to the final plat, correct? Any questions about the resolution?
I mean, I think we went over everything last meeting, all our pros, cons and detail, and then we wanted to.
Right.
Just think about it. I honestly don't have any additional concerns.
I agree.
So whoever makes the motion must then read. And then try to get a second.
I'll make a motion with this packet, Mary can read it. The rest.
The approval.
The approval that is. Six pages long.
I will, I will. It's not as bad as the seeker.
No, no, would you like to?
I'll, I will make the motion to approve the preliminary plat as follows. Um, do I start at the whereas or do I start very, very top?
Uh, whereas is fine.
All right, whereas, number one. The applicants, Lazzar Woods LLC and Lazzar Estates LLC submitted an application for preliminary plat approval to the planning board for approval of a major subdivision. Proposing an eighteen-building lot and two-road lot subdivision on an approximate thirty-three acre parcel. In the Hamlet Residential District located on Sagamore Drive, Lake Tor Road and Millrose Lane in the town of Lake Lazzar. Parcel ID numbers are two nine eight point one six dash three dash five zero point one. Two nine eight point one six dash three dash five five. Two nine eight point two zero dash one dash three four. Two nine nine point one three dash one dash three. Two nine nine point one three dash one dash four. Two nine nine point one three dash one dash five. Two nine nine point one three dash one dash six. The preliminary plat, uh, number two, the preliminary plat shows eighteen proposed single-family homes with onsite stormwater management. Extension of public water mains, pedestrian paths and individual onsite wastewater treatment systems. Sixteen point six seven acres will be conserved through deed restrictions as undeveloped land. Number three. This proposal was classified as a type one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act secret. On October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, planning board declared lead agency status and subsequently sent all required notices regarding coordinated review. Number four. On November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, the planning board opened the public hearing on the preliminary plat. At which all interested persons were heard, kept the hearing open through the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting. Number five. The proposal was referred to. The Adirondack Park Agency who responded with a non-jurisdictional letter, as did the Army Corps of Engineers. Applicant is also working with the New York State Department of Health, D O H. As they will also need approval from the D O H as well as the town. Number six. The planning board completed the full environmental assessment form parts two and three on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. And determined that the proposal would result in no significant adverse impacts to the environment. And the N Y S T E C. Environmental Notice Bulletin published on, uh, published the declarate, negative declaration on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. The public hearing was closed after the secret review on February twenty-sixth. Number seven. The applicant has now submitted all materials requested and required by the planning board and the Lake Lazzar subdivision regulations. Now, therefore be it resolved that upon review and consideration of the above proceedings. The application and preliminary plat, all relevant materials submitted. The review by the town of Lake Lazzar and the town engineer. We find as follows. Number one. The proposed subdivision is appropriate for the town of Lake Lazzar community. The town Lake Lazzar put together a committee and hired a consultant to create a new comprehensive plan for the town and. One of the major developments of this comprehensive plan was the need for more housing for middle-class families in the town to increase the school district enrollment for. The betterment of the community and businesses in town. The developer has sought a conservation easement instead of putting the maximum number of houses allowed under the subdivision regulations, which is appropriate for the Lake Lazzar community. Additionally, the applicant has revised their plans at the request of the planning board during the review process to better suit the requirements of the Lake Lazzar community. Number two. Use of the conservation subdivision is the best use of the land being subdivided as it maintains the character of the lands surrounding the lake and of the community around the subdivision. The use of deed restrictions outlined in the preliminary plat will conserve the character in the future as well. Number three. The design of the streets in the subdivision meet all town requirements. The use of the cul-de-sacs are appropriate for the volume of lots that are being developed. Additionally, cul-de-sacs make pedestrian traffic safer without the concern of high-volume traffic. The cul-de-sacs and hammerhead designs meet all requirements for fire and safety emergency services. Number four. On the preliminary plat, the applicant has considered the arrangement, location and design of the streets. The applicant has designed the most appropriate solution to the existing conditions. Although there have been numerous public comment on concerns about the stormwater. It appears from the actual topography, the stormwater will be contained within the subdivision itself. This concern has also been reviewed by the town engineer who does not think it will be an issue and whose opinion is acceptable by the planning board. Although the town engineer will fully review the final stormwater plan and the applicant shall address any concerns that may be identified through the detailed review. As the applicant progresses through the permitting process. Number five. The location of the town aquifer, which has been the topic of much public comment, has been reviewed by a town engineer. Who has stated that the applicant has gone beyond the Department of Health requirements. D O H mandates that septic systems are at least two hundred feet away from wellheads. Septic systems in this subdivision are at least six hundred feet away. Additionally, there is current development within the six hundred foot range without concern. The new subdivision will have septic systems which are designed better and further from the aquifer than these existing septic systems and therefore. Planning board does not find these concerns regarding the distance and location of the town aquifer to be persuasive. Number six. The conservation easement is the best scenario for the town in terms of lot sizes and arrangements as it achieves the goal of the town in encouraging more development without the cost of affecting the soul and character of the town. The preliminary plat as designed fits into the overall landscape of the proposed area of the subdivision. Number seven. The sanitary systems will be self-contained to each lot, which is the desire of the town. Although the water pressure is below the desire of the Department of Health, it is still sufficient to meet the requirements. The Department of Health will ultimately decide whether the water pressure is sufficient, which relieves the planning board of the duty to decide this issue. Number eight. The lands around this proposed subdivision are already subdivided and developed. Therefore, future development of adjoining lands not yet subdivided is irrelevant. Number nine. The waivers being requested by the developer will not impact the character of the development nor will it jeopardize the public health, safety morals and general welfare. These waivers have been requested and explained in a letter dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from Environmental Design Partnership, L L P. Attached to this resolution and have been reviewed and approved by the town engineer and the highway superintendent. Specifically, the waivers will not impact the character of the development, nor will they jeopardize the public health, safety morals and general welfare because, A. The subdivision regulations do not allow a road slope of more than ten percent, however, Millrose Lane will contain a slope of twelve percent. The slope was reviewed by Warren County Fire Prevention and Building Code Enforcement, the town engineer, the town highway superintendent. And Fire Chief Novatarski, who determined that this slope would not affect emergency services and the county would approve this slope. B. The subdivision regulations require a pavement width of twenty-eight feet. However, the legs of the T turnarounds of two roads have a pavement width of twenty-two feet. Twenty-two feet is sufficient to turn an emergency vehicle and auto truck and exceeds the requirements in appendix D of the New York State Fire Code as stated by Warren County Fire Prevention and Building Code Enforcement. C. The subdivision regulations limit cul-de-sac roads to eight hundred feet in length. However, Millrose Lane is proposed, has a proposed length of one thousand seven hundred and twelve feet. This length was reviewed by both Warren County Fire Prevention and code, uh, Building Code Enforcement and Fire Chief Novatarski. Who did not find an issue with the road length and the county approved of the extended road length. D. The subdivision regulations require cul-de-sac roads to have a maximum grade within one hundred feet of centerline intersections.
Fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty feet. Of centerline intersections. Road A will have a maximum slope of three percent from the centerline of Millrose Lane. However, Millrose Lane has a slope of twelve percent at the intersection. This is a three-leg intersection. Equals approaching Millrose Lane from road A will be required to stop. Road B will have a slope of less than three percent for the first fifty feet from the intersection with Lake Tor Road. Vehicles entering Lake Tor Road from road D. Will be traveling uphill at slow speeds and any risk of vehicles sliding out into Lake Tor Road is minimal. E. The subdivision regulations limit roadside ditches to no longer than four hundred feet. Millrose Lane contains a proposed roadside swell totaling six hundred and eighty feet. Because of the condition of the soil, swales will allow for infiltration and filtration of stormwater runoff prior to entering downstream stormwater management devices. In steeper areas, check dams will be installed in the swales to slow flows, reduce erosion and promote infiltration. Number ten. The developer will furnish a bond before the commencement of any construction on subdivision. Sufficient to cover the complete construction of the subdivision infrastructure, including but not limited to the completion of the roads, pedestrian pathways and stormwater systems. Be it further resolved that based upon the findings, this planning board approves the application for preliminary plat approval. The applicant shall comply with required permitting process and address any future town engineer comments if required. Prior to final plat approval and commencement of construction. Introduced by.
We can write that.
Okay, all right, well, that's the end of it.
Mike, panic, made the motion, does anyone second it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, real call vote to approve the resolution, approving the preliminary plat for the Lazzar Woods major subdivision on Sagamore Drive. Roll call vote. Barbara Conroy.
Hi.
Tony Springer.
Yes.
Francis Martinville.
Yes.
Josh Fisher. Michael Page.
Yes.
Rose Albertura.
Yes.
And Chairman John Krensky.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carry.
Great. Thank you very much, I know it's a lot of hard work for all the members in the town, do appreciate the opportunity, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody give a chance to read the minutes on the line.
Maybe. Also, you have a hundred pages? Yes.
Yeah, I, I mistakenly hit print before I saw the page count.
Corrections? Ready to jump?
I saw nothing wrong, the smooth system seems pretty great in terms of capturing the.
Mike, I will say it says you were talking about the Romans.
No. Advantage you were talking about. No, I don't. No.
I think I have.
Balance roll and needles.
You guys can still throw it on.
Because he was talking about his. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, no, yeah, I remember that.
Shakespeare. Like one through ten, but now, but once again.
Yeah, because it was, it was beer. So I make a motion with a hundred minutes.
Oh, oh.
All right, motion approve, the minutes, all in favor?
All right.
Any votes? Motion carry.
You're opening the business before we're listening, carrying or something, so about the emails?
Your email, this, Pam did not get it. The notices for the meeting and all of the materials, did everyone else receive theirs?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll chat again, Pam, and the only other thing that I have is, um, I was, I, we, the office received notice this week from Eric Sandblum on that Evergreen Estates subdivision that we worked on over on Call Street. They have DOH approval, so they will be coming back probably, I'm thinking next month for, um, that, for final plat review and approval. So just so that you're aware of that.
Yeah, I have a question about that, this was one that was approved two years ago, correct? So we still need a, a final plat approval.
For the H D modified road.
It had to scale it back a little bit just because of the, going outside of the APA and since D E C has up their regulations, they had to scale it back because of the new.
Okay.
The new modification, yeah.
Still to twenty feet though, correct? Okay.
Take over the road stormwater there as well, so.
I know the first public hearing, we had open for a long time, nobody, nobody ever came, but. Okay.
I, I have that, I will get to, I don't know, Rosa, did you read? That's been in the works, not in the works for about a year, you probably don't have any paperwork on that one, Call Street, Lake Luzerne.
The name is familiar, I, I, I may have some.
I will skip the maps to newest members.
Okay.
And maybe the last cover sheet that covers all of the action that the board has done up to that point, okay? That's all I have.
Is April twenty-third, the next scheduled?
Um. So. Just the week the kids are out of school.
I think they're all, I won't be four.
Oh, yeah, before Easter.
Yeah, they're on four Easter, they're, they are.
What's that?
I thought I was on vacation, but I'm not.
It's supposed to be vacation, unfortunately. If you are, you'll do pause and skip a month, like.
They move it in a different week.
I know, I want to personally thank Mary for all of her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and everything. Thank you.
I guess all of this is. Well, it's seven thirty.
A second.